This is the first Tuesday in the month of Wapaka City Council meeting.
Welcome, everybody, to our regular scheduled City Council meeting tonight. Today is Tuesday, May 7th, 2019. I call this meeting to order, and let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll ask Sandy to read the open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the Common Council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin State statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And roll call.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Proczowski.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Mary Fair. And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
Consent agenda, these are items that are on your, in your packet and your agenda. We take each one of these items as just one motion altogether. And if you would like to see those changed so that you will handle those individually tonight, you would have to tell us at this time whether you would like to change that. Hearing none, we would need a motion then to approve the consent agenda as printed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Chestnut, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Regular agenda, again, we have no additional handouts here. So unless you have any concerns with the agenda as printed, I would need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Sorry about that, my phone is doing something. We have a motion by, who did made it, I'm sorry, Alan, okay? And second by Hackett, that we approve the consent agenda, or the regular agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right, next we have the... Under new agenda items and announcements, we have a proclamation here. "This is the 50th anniversary of the Municipal Clerk Week, May 5th through May 11th, 2019. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at all other levels, and whereas municipal clerk have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas the municipal clerk continually strives to improve the administration of affairs of the office of municipal clerk through the participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it's most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Brian Smith, Mayor of the City of Wapaka, do recognize the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2019, as Municipal Clerk's Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk and deputy, and to all municipal clerks for their vital services they perform, and their dedication to the communities they represent." All right, so we'll put that on file. All right, next then, we have public input. This is for a non-agenda item. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item, please step up to the podium and limit, give your name and address, and limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Yep? Sorry. Go ahead.
Good evening, folks. I'm Kari Espenson, I reside at 124 East Lake Street in Wapaka. It is no small irony that this week, the United Nations released a report saying 1 million species are facing extinction across the globe due to the activities of humans. Among the causes they cite are a 70% rise in invasive species that threaten native habitats and plant and animal populations, and the people who depend on them for food and survival. The good news is the report says it's not too late, but the world will have to get on board quickly if it has to prevent the world's sixth mass extinction. That involves concerted action by governments and people working together. While the sign has gone, our mission to utilize Oz Natural Area on Wapaka's east side as an educational demonstration site for best land and water conservation practices continues. Here we hope to provide a learning environment featuring remnants of our rich natural heritage, and a unique location where the city's industrial, recreational, and agricultural history meet. While we have gained the enthusiastic support of many in our community, we continue to encounter institutional obstacles within the governance of the city of Wapaka, preventing us from realizing this dream. On October 17th of last fall, we made a presentation to the Planning and Zoning Committee to utilize the rotational grazing of goats and horses to aid in a non-chemical, long-term control of invasive species that threaten the survival of the woodlands. At that meeting, Brennan Kane made a commitment to research the topic and get back to us within 45 to 60 days. The 60-day period came and went, and we heard nothing. In early 2019, we placed a call to the city administrator, who told us that the city would be overhauling its entire zoning code and that we should call back in March. In March, I spoke with Brennan again, and he said they still had not gotten to things. In early April, my husband reached out to the city administrator, who said he would speak with staff and get back to us that week. My husband also told him about a letter of support we had received from an alderperson for the city of Kocana, where they're using goats to control invasive species in the Thousand Islands Environmental Center. On April 23rd, my husband sent a follow-up email reminder. Last week, my husband received a call back from Mr. Velker, who told him he had in fact spoken with the city of Kocana, but now it could be as long as two years before the city of Wapaka gets to this matter, and the topic is simply not a priority. We know none of this is new to you, and yet we are still in a place of non-action. In the meantime, herbicides are being applied to the land. Triclopiad disrupts the normal growth and development of the nervous system. It accumulates in fetal brains when pregnant animals are exposed. It is highly toxic to fish, decreases survival of young birds and frogs, and has been found to have contaminated well streams and rivers near areas where it has been used. After nearly 30 years of commitment to a vision, a place, and home, at some point, one grows weary of bumping up against those with limited concern for the harm contamination of the environment poses to human health. Most people can't afford to wait a lifetime to see things change. Tonight, we are asking you again to grant us permission to utilize rotational grazing at the Oz Natural Area beginning this summer. We are open to a temporary arrangement as a pilot project, and we are happy to give any tour of the, any of you a tour of the site and answer any outstanding questions you might have. Thank you again for allowing me to speak to you tonight.
Thank you, Kari. Anybody else that would like to speak on a non, or on a non-agenda item?
Hi, my name is Sophia Buchkiewicz. I reside at 124 East Lake Street, Wapaka. And I just wanted to read you all a letter from Thousand Islands Environmental Center. To whom it may concern, my name is Diana Dreessen, and I am an alderman for the city of Kocana, as well as a committee member for the Thousand Islands Environmental Center. In both of my roles, I was supportive of exploring the benefits of using goats as invasive species controlled. Invasive species have been very quickly altering our natural habitat through our conservancy zone, state, and nation in recent decades. In the past decade, Thousand Islands has put countless hours into both mechanical and chemical control efforts on the conservancy zone in an attempt to get the most problematic plants in check. Thousand Islands is now trying another method that could add to our arsenal of control methods, the use of biological control in the form of goats. Goats can get into hard-to-walk areas, thrive on unwanted vegetation, up to 80% of their diet, and have a large liver that better tolerates toxins. This method would also circumvent the need for chemicals and allows for the gradual process instead of drastic change. Many other properties have had success with this method of control, including Heritage Hill State Park in Green Bay, and the Greenwood Cemetery in DePere, and River Edge Nature Center in Newburgh, Wisconsin. In the fall of 2018, we were able to test this method of control on a small portion of the conservancy zone. City Council supported the project by allowing the goats within city limits through suspending the enforcement of our ordinance that would prevent them from being allowed in the city. We then utilized the resources of our community, such as Eagle Scouts, our local high school environmental science classes, and local businesses, and completed the trial session with goats for minimal cost. It has been a great way to connect with our visitors and even draw new visitors into the community to see the project. Staff worked together to promote and educate throughout the project in order to highlight our efforts and bring awareness to the importance of managing invasive species. We had a fantastic response from the general public, as well as our local media outlets. Our two-week trial was, went very well and can be considered a successful first step. We plan to repeat the browsing sessions two more times in 2019, and most likely beyond that, as repeated browsing is needed for long-term impact. Although our long-term trial is not complete, we have seen enough successes already to encourage other communities to look into this environmentally friendly method of keeping our habitats healthy. I hope you will consider this method within your community so that you can see the results firsthand. Sincerely, Diana Dreessen. And I have some copies of this letter as well for the, for you guys to share too. I read a paraphrased version, but thank you so much.
Yep. Anybody else that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item?
Aye.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Just hang on to them, and we'll take them after the meeting. Okay, go ahead.
My name is Lori Youngers. I live at 1210 Berlin Street. I'm here just to tell you that I've seen goats being used in different cemeteries. I saw it in Hawaii, in some of their special islands. And when I was in Savannah, visiting my sister, we just witnessed this this last July, and they had roped off areas, some goats, and some herding dogs. And they just moved them all along this old cemetery. It worked very well, didn't cost, you know, much of anything. And the thing is with, with goats, their digestive system kills the seeds. So all you're left with is fertilizer. Those invasive species cannot grow back because of the enzymes in their stomach. I think this is a great thing, especially for around here in Wapaka. Don't need to have those herbicides sink into our, our, our ground and contaminate anymore than things already have. I just wanted to let you know that I've seen this, it's amazing. And as someone who lives in the city of Wapaka, I'm all in favor of this trial. Please hear. Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. Anybody else that would like to speak on a non-agenda item?
Mayor?
Yeah.
What would have to happen for us to move forward with this?
Henry, you want to answer that?
Well, a little bit of my statement was misrepresented. I didn't tell Russ, two years. I said that we are transitioning to a new director. We're evaluating where we're at with the zoning code, and that it would take some time to get through it. And that staff at our level had a very positive conversation about this concept. But every example that was given is a public property. And they were hired, there was a vendor that came in and managed it. And as far as I know, what the property owners want to do is run it themselves. But it is something we have talked about internally, that we're not necessarily feel that it's a negative thing. It's that we have priorities, and the zoning ordinance is a priority. And another detail that was left out was Brennan came to the City Plan Commission and asked them to help prioritize the work of his office. And the zoning code was up there, and this issue was brought forward to the Plan Commission, and they said prioritize it, but it's not the top of the list. And that's all I've reiterated to folks, is that we're transitioning. And we're going to try to keep the office moving as efficiently as possible, but there's just some things we can't get to.
If I may? Couldn't we get it off?
Wait until he's finished, though.
And, and again, just to characterize my conversation with Kocana, they suspended their ordinance, and they did what they felt was needed. But I was also told that had a private citizen come forward, they probably would not have allowed it. This was public property, they tried some measures, they weren't totally effective, and they came up with this approach. And they tried it, and it apparently has met with some success. And so that was at least comforting to me, that's something we should legitimately look at. And that's what I relayed in our conversation, is that we will talk about it, but it just can't happen for you this year. And that's, you know, I don't think the staff has closed the door on it. But the Plan Commission did prioritize the office's work. And it was lower down on the list.
Okay, Dimitri?
Okay, um, it just seems like a simple, quick vote, and it could be off of the list. And it doesn't have to even be dealt with again. I mean, can we just get it off the list? I mean, why, why postpone it?
Well, let's talk about a few things.
We can deal with it in a few seconds.
Okay, neighbors, okay, there's not a lot of neighbors. Are you only going to require a vendor? Because they want to do it personally, and not hire a vendor necessarily. Okay? Is it a permanent change? Can we, uh, uh, just disregard the ordinance and do a pilot test? Probably can, but we've got to put some parameters around it. And to, you know, we need to look at all our properties across the city. Now, again, where they're situated, it probably makes a lot of sense, potentially, because there's not a lot of residents. In Kocana, they purposely, they have residential areas abutting this property. So they kept them away because there's noise, there's odors, potentially. So there's some impacts to neighbors you got to consider as well.
Let, let me stop right here, okay? So we got, we're on a slippery slope here. First of all, this was a non-agenda item, and we've just made it into an agenda item. So if you'd like to see it on the agenda, council members, contact Clerk's Office, and we'll look at putting it on the agenda. The appropriate place is for it to be at the City Planning Commission, and to move from the City Planning Commission to the council at that, at that level. So if it's important enough for you to do that, contact Sandy or Henry and put it on the agenda. But we, we really shouldn't be discussing an item that's not on the agenda tonight. They gave us information. We have council members that are interested in hearing more about it. That's fine. And we'll, and we'll look at doing it in the future. But that's the appropriate way to do it. Okay? All right. Any other non-agenda item? All right, let's move on then to, we have a mayor's appointment tonight, and our council president, Paul Mayo.
Thanks, Mayor. The mayor appoints Fay Wilson to the Historic Preservation Committee. After hearing the mayor's appointment, I need a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second.
By Proczowski, second by, I'm, I'm sorry, Keeland, second by Chestnut, to approve the mayor's appointment of Fay Wilson to the Historic Preservation Commission. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. Back to you, Mayor.
All right. Thanks, Paul. Okay, and then still under unfinished business, letter 8B, we have authorization to continue discussion with the school district officials concerning Fund 80 implementation, inflammation, implementation. Andrew Whitman. We got two Andrews now, so Andrew, has everybody met?
No.
Andrew Dane, I'm sorry, I, I guess we have at the City Planning Commission, but we haven't. Henry, do you want to introduce?
Sure.
Sorry, Andrew.
That's fine.
Well, this is Andrew Dane. He's brought on board to be our interim Community Economic Development Director. And he'll be with us for a limited term, and been working with us a couple weeks now.
All right. Okay, let's go back, Fund 80, Andrew Whitman.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. And by the next meeting, we'll figure out how we can figure out who can be Andrew and who has to change their names, so we'll figure that out for you. So, point of this memo here is to continue the conversation for Fund 80 and moving forward as we progress through Fund 80. This has been something that's been talked about for quite a long time. There was a presentation by the past director. I believe most of you saw it either here or at the school board level at that time. Fund 80, just a quick review, is a fund through the school district meant for community-based programs. There are some examples on here that I list right from their website, such as adult education, community recreation programs, swimming pools, things of that sort. Moving into the director role, I was aware, but I am more fully aware of the negative impact that our non-resident structure currently has on our community and the family, families in our community. So we want to continue to push for this conversation. We've been through some meetings, as it says in the agenda, or in the memo there, that we've been through some meetings with the school board finance department or committee, and there were some questions raised at that meeting. We met again with some representatives of the school board and the school, and essentially got a list of questions that they were wanting answered from us. We're working through that process. Now, part of that process is, is this tonight, that we go through. We'll present that information to them, and hopefully continue that conversation with them as well. Looking over some of the things that Fund 80 is meant for, some of the things that we offer, does line up well. Things such as our senior center, our beach, our youth programs, our youth center. And I think a lot of those can be justified and accountable under a Fund 80 scenario, if we work with the school district to implement that. So what we're looking for tonight is some official support, essentially, from you guys as the council. We've looked at different expenses for those things that we offer, some of the overhead, some of the direct cost expenses. And the number that we got to was $350,000. So what we're trying to get to tonight is requesting that the Common Council officially support continuing the Fund 80 conversation at a request of $350,000 for Fund 80 implementation through the school board.
Okay. Andrew, thank you. So we are looking for a motion tonight, but if you have some questions or comments, obviously, we need to get this through, or if you're prepared to make a motion, to, for you to approve that the staff approaches the school district about Fund 80 at that dollar a month, and we'll entertain that motion. So, Steve?
I would like to see some figures on that. You're just coming up with this figure, and we haven't seen anything to support it one way or another. And I don't think we really can make a decision just based on a figure.
Well, what, what, what are you looking for?
I'm looking for why it's 300-some thousand. We don't have any information on that. Is it all the, I guess I want more information, so that I can look at it and say, this makes sense, or this doesn't make sense.
I would also second that. I mean, I, I think it would be good to know what portion of the budget that that 350 will cover. And will that 350 mean that the taxpayers in the city will wind up paying less than they're currently paying? Because the expense of the program will be covered by the school district? Or would the city residents wind up being double taxed because they're still paying the same tax into the program, plus then a school tax?
Well, let's go back to your first question then, Dimitri, and even Steve's. I wasn't ready to have somebody else speak, because I was still thinking about the answer to Steve's question. But Kathy, are you prepared to, to give some information on this? And again, we're not trying to...
I can talk to Steve's first question.
Okay.
Mr. Hackett's first question, Kathy can jump in a little bit as well. And then we can get to some of the other questions as well. The number comes from those four things listed on there. The senior center, beach, youth programs, youth center. Most of that is the expenses that we have in our budget for those four costs. There are some overhead costs considered into that, as far as some of the park maintenance, the wrecked min, as far as my position, the wrecked program supervisor, and our front desk staff. There is some consideration of the time they spend on that as well. And then some of the expense, a small amount of that expense, is the operations of the rec center that we hold those, some of those programs on. Those four things, plus those three overhead, is where we got that number from. So everything is exactly how it comes out of the budget. So that, that's where the number comes from. And that's why we feel that's justified and accountable with that. And Kathy can add anything that she thinks is part of that as well.
And those amounts are the total amounts that we have in the budget for those portions of the park and rec. So we're looking at those as qualified for Fund 80 expenses. And the total amount of $350,000 on the school district's equalized value amounts to levy increase for them of less than 2 cents per thousand? We are looking at our city residents being required to reduce our levy by $80,000 for $350,000, because it's a transfer. We also have to remember that we would be losing approximately $125,000 worth of the township revenues that we currently get. So that's part of the figure in the 350. And the cost of that 350 is going to be over the school district's total equalized value as of last year was $1.5 billion. So if you look at $350,000 and $1.5 billion, the difference is, is not as much. And one of the things that we were told by the school district is that their levy is going to be reduced next year, when we would bring this Fund 80 in because of their debt service being dropped. So this probably is a very good time to implement something like this, that with less impact. We answered some of the questions that we had from the committee as to impacts, what we would have to reduce for our taxpayers. The three townships that currently provide monies to the city for recreation, youth programs, would not be required under levy limit law to reduce their levies. However, it would be in their best interest for their taxpayers to reduce it. But, any other questions?
Well, I think you addressed even the second question to Dimitri too, but we could discuss that a little further. Can I add to that too, before you ask questions? Because I've had a, a, a number of meetings with Andrew and Henry and Kathy trying to understand this, and that's my advantage, I guess, that I, that I did meet with them. And you aren't digging down into the nitty-gritty that, that we did to try and figure this out. But the parks and rec budget, now, the parks and rec budget, if you look online, it will be a different number, because the cemetery is included in the parks and rec budget. And obviously, when you talk Fund 80, you're not talking after death. You know, you're talking childbirth to seniors. You know, you're talking childbirth to seniors. So, if you take that out, and I'm throwing numbers at you here, but the total parks and rec budget is $795,000. So, that's what the city's budget is for maintaining our parks and our recreation in the community. And I'm not sure, Andrew, if you touched on this or not. So, basically, on that proverbial $100,000 house, you're paying $15 for parks and rec in our community per year. Okay? So, as a taxpayer, if you have $100,000, you're paying $15 for parks and rec in our community. I'm correct on that, right Kathy? Yeah. Okay. So, if you look at the $795,000 and you look at what our cost is for parks and recreation, my question to them was, what if we got out of the recreation business where the city just didn't do recreation anymore? Okay? I mean, we do have parks that are just for basically recreation, but we, you know, we would continue to maintain those obviously because they have other things that are important in those parks, like, for example, Swan Park. You still have the playground equipment, you have the trail, you have the skate park, and you have numerous other things. Plus, we have our wells there too. So, we wouldn't be able to get rid of the Swan Park for any reason. We also have the rec center, you know, which is a valuable asset to our community too. But, going back to my answer on that where you said, okay, and these numbers are gonna kind of blend to you now when I tell you this, but if we got out of the park, out of the recreation business, just completely out of the recreation business, we would be at, our budget would be about $350,000. The same as what we're asking basically the school board for the Fund 80. So, now, that's half. So, now, a taxpayer in the city of Wapaka on a $100,000 house is now paying $7.50 a year to use the parks in the city. You know, walk the trails, to swim at South Park, to have lifeguards on duty at South Park. You know? I mean, so, it's a, the city's got a pretty good deal already when it comes to that part of it. So, when you look at the $350,000, how they came up with that is to figure out what the costs were to run the programs plus to include overhead costs for running, for operating the rec center, operating costs for labor, including administration, and also to, well, just completely overhead costs for recreation and so on. And I think in that number two, did you talk about the revenue too that we would receive?
No. I don't know exactly what you're asking. We would still be requesting...
We would still be requesting that we would retain the registration fees as far as covering our costs. So, we were looking at, that would be a $75,000 that we would still retain in registration fees, and we would not turn those over to the school district. So...
So, we, and I rounded it up, sorry, so our numbers won't be exact, but I rounded it up to $80,000 because right now, remember, people that are not part of the participation program, the youth program, they pay a heck of a lot more money to participate in activities to the point where it's cost prohibitive for those people to... So, for example, like the Towne Lynn does not participate, and we only have about, what did you tell me, 5%?
5%.
5% participation for, in the rec programs in the Towne Lynn. Now, I don't know how many people that adds up to, but it's still only 5% out of 100. So, we think that once there, half of the Towne Lynn is in the school district of Wapaka and half's in Waigah, so this Fund 80 would cover the half that lives in the city, or that's in the Wapaka school district. And we would think that we would get a lot more participation. And that's what we want, especially with the youth. We want them to participate in recreation and activities in our community, no doubt. And this helps in the senior programs, helps in the adult programs, so it helps all over the place. You know, I mean, in my mind, the Fund 80 is a win-win situation, but we just need to convince the school district and also the townships that this is a good move on their part. We're not, the city's not really saving money. As a city taxpayer, you're still gonna pay the same taxes. It's just that part of your taxes now that was taxed at the city level is now gonna go to the school district, and the school district's gonna tax you for that. Now, they might have more room so that they don't have to raise their taxes as much, so we might save money that way. But, basically, the dollar amounts are just switching from one hand to the other hand to cover this program. So, it's, again, it's, we're not, we're not trying to get away with anything here. We're just trying to make it better for everybody in the whole area. I think that's a, that's a good thing. Any other questions or comments?
I feel like maybe we didn't get to one of Dimitri's other questions as far as the, was it the price of the actual programs?
I think the mayor kind of answered it. I mean, what I heard you say was that the cost of the, that the city taxpayers will be paying less because they're, the savings incurred by the city by not having to run those programs, the money that would have been spent on it will help, since we don't have to spend that money, our levy will be reduced. And then, in turn, the school district will be paying for it through the Fund 80. That's all I wanted to know. I certainly support Fund 80. I think it makes a lot of sense to support the cost across the school district because that's where all the kids are coming from, all over the school district to participate. So...
Okay. I thought you were asking about the price per, like, when you register or sign up, so I'm sorry. I just heard you.
Anybody else? Questions, comments? Are you prepared to make a motion tonight? I mean, we can put it off for another meeting, but I have to tell you this. We've been working on Fund 80 for a couple of years now, and now, as you know, the school board budget, they're, they're on a fiscal year, so they're from July 1st to June 30th, where the city, of course, is on January 1st to December 31st. And if we don't get a meeting with them and try and figure something out here, then we're another year and a half away from this happening. And we've already put it off two cycles already, so... And I think finally, staff feels comfortable with everything that they have, and they can make a good presentation to the, to the school board, so...
I would move to authorize Andrew and others from the city to continue discussion with the school district officials concerning Fund 80 implementation.
Second.
Second. Paul, can I ask you, before I take, I think Dimitri was a little quicker than you Dave, but can I ask you to put the $350,000 figure in there?
Sure. And discuss the $350,000 that we would be asking the school district for.
Okay. And Steve, you had your hand up first, so can I take the motion and then you ask?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. So, we have a motion by mail, second by Martin, that we go to the school board and discuss Fund 80 using the dollar amount of $350,000. Okay? Discussion, Steve?
I was, I've been in favor of Fund 80 ever since I heard it. I thought it was a great deal. But, what I was getting at was, when you go to the school board and present your presentation, make sure you have everything written out so they can look at it and see what you're saying. Because when you see it, it's a lot easier to understand than when somebody tells you this and this and this and this, and you're trying to write it down.
Well, and I appreciate that. I mean, so by detail, are you talking what I said to you tonight, or are you looking for even more detail?
Well, what you said tonight was great because you got an idea of where everything's coming from.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the part about the townships that are not involved with the rec center and the program, they're the ones that really need to get on board for two cents.
Yeah. Yeah. Absolutely. Okay. Any other discussion? Andrew, you have anything else, or you got...
I think some of it, so this is, you know, a memo version of it, but a lot of the questions that are asked from the school board, some of those questions will be answered through that as well, or some of that information will be given. But, I do understand what you're saying and agree that, you know, we could spell it out a little bit better so they understand why that number is on there.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Ready, Sam?
Do we need a roll call? I have it as voice, folks.
We can do it, boys. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
All right. We're to new business. HH Heinder Brewing Company, they're asking for a premise description change. I am assuming this is for their beer and liquor sales, right, Henry? So, go ahead.
Yes, Mayor. The request is on one, page 102 of your package. We do have Mike Strike here who's affiliated with the business, but they want to expand their patio area. And I think one, page 103, if we could just go there real quick, kind of orient you, again, the blue hatched area is their current patio that you've all seen. And they want to wrap that patio around, and that's the red area. And there was some discussion I had with Brandon, who is part of the business. And then, I also had a chance to speak with Chief Hosele. And there was one concern that we came upon, and I have discussed with Mike briefly before the meeting here, is that they are gonna put some curb stops on the Churchill Street side to kind of differentiate the cars from the folks, the patrons, try to ensure some safety. If you go out there, there's a little patio, and I guess they just want to extend that. They do intend to have bartenders monitoring this area. The other area concern that the chief and I had, but I would probably ask Mike to talk about it, is the entrance from the back. When we talked about this a week ago, Brandon seemed open to putting off some kind of fence there to kind of keep people from passing through the alley, but have come to learn that they use the alley for snow removal and that their patrons on busy nights and days or whatever park around the old bus garage and would use this rear entrance, if you will, to come, to come in. I think, Mike, you had an idea to address that concern?
Yes.
That might not involve a gate?
Hello, everyone. It's been a while. Back on the hot seat in Wapaka. What we propose doing is, first of all, across the front, if you've been by our place or been there, there's some yellow concrete parking bumpers, if you will, and we were gonna put a couple more of those right across the front of the opening so we could park a couple cars there and on, then also stop anybody from driving into the seating area. Then also, we're proposing a sign on a heavy standard in the middle of the back of the area, in the middle of the drive area, that on one side says, "No alcohol beverages beyond this point," and on the back side says, "Welcome to HH Heinder." And then, we'd also propose putting "No beverages beyond this point" on the 810 building and also on the opposite corner of the 804 building.
That's the green hatched area, I think, in the drawing. Well, you don't, you have a black and white.
I have a black and white. I got the cheap one.
Yeah, they have a couple beanbag tosses.
Yes, in between us and the food pantry, and we worked that out with the food pantry, we gravelled that area and put a fence. There was a fence between the buildings right up at the sidewalk. We moved it back and then made that a bag toss area. We're not proposing having alcohol within the bag toss area, stopping it on the, what would be the northeast corner of the 804 building.
So, can you say that again to me about the signs that you proposed to put up?
Yes. They would be "No alcoholic beverages beyond this point." So, one would be on the north edge of the current patio of the brewery, which is 804. The other would be on the corner of the 810 building, so it would be the south side of 804 facing the 804 building. And one would be on a heavy standard right in the middle of the drive area, behind the seating area, that would say, facing the seating area, "No alcoholic beverages beyond this point."
Okay. So, if I may, you might want to change your sign so that it says, on the way out, that it says, "Open intoxicants," so that "No open intoxicants on the way out," and then, on the way in, you would just have "No alcoholic beverages can be carried in," or something like that.
Okay.
Anything else? Mike, did you, did he answer your question, Henry, that you were...
Yeah, I think we were just, I guess, when I talked to the chief yesterday, we, I guess we didn't appreciate how many patrons kind of come in that way. And I think, I understand now why I kind of want to try to keep it open, but then the snow removal was something new I talked to Brandon about today.
Yeah, we like to keep that clear. If we don't, we get slow melting, and it doesn't run away well, and it'll sit against the building. It'll cause us problems. And in the back, we're upgrading the outside lighting just a little bit on the 810 building just because, especially the backside, there's a lot of parking back there, and it's awful dark. And we have a good light in the middle of the walkway from the front to the rear of the brewery on that side. So, we have pretty good light there. And then, we've also worked out a deal with, with the food pantry that we're gonna put some new lights. They have some lights that don't work. So, we're gonna put some new lights on for them and then pay the upcharge for whatever electric costs them. So, we get some additional lighting around the food pantry, because a lot of people park around there too. Which isn't part of this, but I thought I'd offer that.
And I think the fact that you're dedicating staff to kind of be through that area and kind of monitoring what's going on.
Yeah, we want to stay on it pretty heavily. We'd like to be able to let people use glass out there, just because it's so much nicer to drink a good beer out of a glass rather than a plastic cup. If we have to switch to plastic, we will, but we'll make it on the current, you know, regular route for the bartenders to go out there and check on things and pick up glass and stuff like that.
Any comments? So, again, they have a liquor license, and what they're asking is to just expand the premise description of that liquor license.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Motion by mail, second by Chestnut, that we approve the expansion of the liquor license for HH Heinder Brewing Company. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good luck. All right, let's move on to... Skippy, where is he? Back online. I don't know.
He's here. I saw him walking in.
I don't know. He comes whenever we call him, Skippy. All right, so this has to do with changing Wapaka online rates in customer agreement. Josh?
Yeah, we've got some minor housekeeping items on our customer agreement we'd like to make some changes to, and since some of these have to do with rates collected, that requires city council approval. And these are just things over the past year or two that have come up that we've wanted to kind of clean up or modify. The first change is we've got two different options for activation fees, $95 if it's paid upfront on your first bill, or if you want to split it over the first three, it's $120 evenly split. And that $120 option really isn't taken advantage of much because people just want the 95 bucks and to save the money. And it doesn't happen too often. We just want to get rid of that option, do the 95 bucks on the first bill, be done with it, and that's comparable to what other internet providers do. They don't split that up at all. The second change in our current agreement, we've got language in there that customers need to give a minimum of 15 days' notice when they want to terminate service and/or when their equipment's returned collected, whichever occurs first. You know, when someone calls in and cancels, we can't send staff out the same day to go get equipment off their house. Sometimes it might take a few days, a week to get out there and do that. And we thought... And, we thought seven days is a more favorable option on that, that when customers cancel, they give seven days' notice or when we've got the equipment collected, whichever occurs first. The third proposed change has to do with something we changed a couple of years ago. So, the setup fee, the activation fee, whether it's the $95 or the $120, doesn't always cover the cost of an install when you factor in the cost of equipment, supplies, staff time, gas in our truck, administrative costs, preparing equipment, setting up accounts and billing, et cetera. You know, a typical installation could be anywhere from, you know, $90 to $300. It just depends on each situation. And, what we did several years ago, so that the upfront activation fee doesn't typically cover that full cost. And, if we charged the full cost, there'd probably be a lot of people that wouldn't sign up because who's going to come up with $300 to sign up with an internet provider? And, a few years ago, we went through kind of an exercise. And, what we came up with, based on monthly rates, kind of what covers our cost and what's profit, it took about six months of someone being with us to recoup that investment of setting up a new customer. So, you add the activation fee and about six-month service and we break even for what our investment was. And, currently, if a customer leaves before six months, we pro-rate the actual installation minus the activation fee over when they cancel. And, that doesn't happen a lot, but it's kind of confusing. And, I want to change that language to, "If you leave before six months, it's a $50 fee". And, that would be waived in a situation where a customer's leaving for a fault not of their own. Maybe we hooked up someone and the technology's just not working out good. Maybe they're moving. And, in the first place when this was, we put this in, it was when we got rid of the one-year contract and just said it's month by month. And, this is more kind of people that jump provider to provider trying to save money. Maybe someone that sets up a temporary service. It's more for cases like that. So, we're just looking, $50 if you leave before six months instead of trying to pro-rate stuff and figure that all out. And, just cleans it up, makes it simpler to explain. And then, the fourth change, we've got different versions of our customer agreement. And, when Tina does stuff with billing, she goes based on whatever version the customer signs. And, seeing some other internet agreements, there's usually language in them that the agreement may be updated or amended from time to time. And, we don't have anything like that in ours. We want to add that language. So, if we make minor changes like this in the future, any customers that sign up when we get this in effect in the future will always fall under the same agreement or the same standards. So, those are the four changes. And since some of them have to do with some rate changes, looking for approval on that. So, any questions?
I would move to approve the changes to the Pak Online rates and customer agreement.
I'll second.
Motion by Martin. Second by Kealan that we approve of the rates and customer agreement, rate changes and customer agreement. Any discussion?
I think Josh did a good job explaining everything in his article here. It's very thorough and understandable, so...
Then, I don't have to answer a bunch of questions.
Okay. Any other discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Pritchardski?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Alan Kealan?
Aye.
And Paul Mail?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Motion carried.
Josh, you're still up. Telephone.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is replacing our current phone system. I'll go into a little bit of detail on this one. So, a couple of years ago, when Kathy asked us to start working on five-year capital planning, one of the things I saw on the horizon was needing to look at our phone system. And, at that time, phone system was working okay. But, it's one of those things, as technology gets older, you want to be proactive about that. And, since that planning process, we've been having issues with our phone system. And, staff will attest to several multi-day outages of the phone system from failed parts, failed hardware. It's an old system and it's kind of buying used parts off eBay to keep it running. The other side of the fence on that is the whole city's not using the same phone system. So, our recreation center is on a whole different system. We can't transfer calls back and forth. When the time comes, we add a public works facility, consolidating them onto this current system would be quite expensive. And, on the other side of the fence, in order to get actual technical support on this phone system, one, they require you to be on semi-up-to-date hardware. Both of our systems are about 10 years old, so they'd need to be replaced to get any adequate tech support. The annual fees for that tech support's quite expensive and you have to be a certified technician with the vendor. And, unless something's changed in the past six months or so, the only certified technician in Wisconsin left his job with the vendor we were working with. So, it's become very hard to get support and I haven't needed to. But, the next option would be to find an out-of-state vendor and hope they never have to be on-site to help you. So, it's just, the current system we're on, it's about, I think it was installed in '08. It was before my time. So, we've gone 11 years' use out of it, which is pretty good for technology. And, I don't think it's a very future-proofed system. We start the process last fall to seek out a new phone system and see what's out there. And, it was important to me that all of our departments were involved with this considering what a big impact this is on operations, the phone on your desk, making sure people like it, making sure it's a system that meets our needs. And, we started out having staff from each department come. We brainstormed what are our needs for our new phone system, what features would we like? And, that was the basis for the RFP that went out. 11 proposals were received and I went through those and vetted down to four that met the requirements that were reasonably close to being within budget. We've had phone systems range from $27,000 to $130,000 on the proposals received. And, it's a $55,000 approved in the budget this year for capital for this. We had four vendors that made the cut. I invite them in. Our staff work group had a chance to meet with each of them, see a presentation. I asked them to bring the phones along that they were proposing. So, we had a chance to get hands-on, try out the phones. And, our staff work group narrowed down to two vendors that we preferred. And, did reference checks on that, start working closely with the vendors to get more defined budget numbers brought through the facilities, take a look at our different special cases, and to discuss all those items. And, our staff work group felt it was important for all the city staff to have an opportunity to see the phones. So, we invite them back again and open invitation for staff to pop in, play with phones, try them out, ask questions. And, through that process, had a chance to talk to staff, get some feedback about which phone they preferred, which vendor, which system had better features in their eyes. And then, had a chance to kind of put all, it's in your packet. I won't read through all of it. But, kind of a comparison of the two systems, the reference checks that I talked to. So, we went through an exhaustive process, made sure to involve all the departments and this affects everyone. And, one thing I asked all four vendors we invited on-site is, "What makes you feel the system you're proposing to us is future-proof?". And, each vendor had a different answer. They all had some good ideas. And, the vendor I am recommending that we go with had my favorite response. And, the phones being proposed, they're kind of a tablet. So, you've got your handset on there. You've got the cable and it's a tablet screen. So, instead of having buttons, you've got a tablet that can be reprogrammed with software. So, if five years from now, there's some really different changes in how phones work, different features, all they do is push out a software update to that phone. The system I'm recommending, it's very software-based. The actual proprietary hardware is very limited. It runs on our standard virtual server. So, we're getting rid of all the, most of the hardware issues that can come up and moving to something that's your phone. It plugs into the network and the rest is just software that runs it. So, as long as we stay good on our annual maintenance fees, we get the updated system, we get support. And, comparing to what we have now, I think it's a very good choice. So, with them, their big answer was, it's software. You update it, you reprogram it, and you get the new features. And, that's how you keep your system up-to-date. And, you're not worrying about swopping out hardware on that. The two vendors that we narrowed down to, there's about $20,000 to $25,000 price difference between them. And, I'm recommending the lower one. And, as I talked to staff, I tried to find as many people that I know demoed the systems. And, I'd say about two-thirds narrowed toward liking these phones and this system. So, I'm looking for approval to work with Unitel to procure a Digium phone system. And, the budget for this project is about $50,997. That includes the phone system, payment to the vendor of $43,937, some money for network switches, some server upgrades to get our servers up to speed to handle the system, some accessories, and contingency in that number. Any questions?
Paul?
Are you going with the four-year annual software assurance?
Yes. So, what we built into this is four years of software assurance. So, it's going to be, you get one year when you buy it and then four years. So, it's going to be five years till I have to worry about how we're going to build this into the operations budget. And, actually, the cost on that, you'd, when you look at the chart comparing the systems, you'd be an idiot to buy that one-year agreement, the two-years only a couple hundred dollars more. So, it might be something where I, you know, juggle a couple things. Maybe I go to three years on antivirus and do something with this to kind of ease it into the budget. But, in essence, I don't have to worry about how this builds into operations for five years and it's not a huge number. I think with our current system, I got a quote once for the annual agreement. It was like $3,500 a year or something like that. So, this is a very nice number.
I thought that was the case. I thought that was fairly reasonable.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions of Josh? He is looking, or we are looking for a motion to approve the purchase of a new phone system for an amount not to exceed $50,997.
I'll move it.
And I'll second.
Motion by Kealan. Second by Chestnut that we approve of working with Unitel to transition to a Digitum Switch VoC?
Switch Vox.
Switch Vox phone system for City Hall Library, Rec Center, and Police Department. At a total cost not to exceed $50,997. Discussion?
I do.
Yes, sir.
I just, what is your implementation timeline?
Well, I've got to get a signed agreement to the vendor and we pay a down payment on that. And, it kind of sounds like two to three months. They'd have to get everything ordered. We'd have to get on their schedule. So, I'd, you know, hard to predict. I'd say June, July, probably, working on it.
Is there any salvage value to our current system?
What I'm going to do with that is, when we're totally done with it, wipe the servers, reload them, and attempt to auction it or sell it. So, yeah, it's not going in the trash. There's, you know...
Okay.
But, that's where I bought a lot of our replacement phones is off eBay and stuff. So, there's other people looking for the equipment.
Okay. Anything else? Sandy will call the roll.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Abstain.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mail?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Scott Pritchardski?
Aye.
Alan Kealan?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
And, Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Eight ayes, one abstain. Motion carried.
All right. One more for us.
And, this ties into the phone system as well. One of the things I learned is I talked to a number of vendors. And, we're currently using something called PRI for our phone lines to come in. It comes in on fiber and that's just how it interfaces with the phone system. It's older technology. And, pretty much every vendor I talked to recommended switching to a SIP connection. So, with the PRI connection, there's a box from Charter. There's a box on your phone system, both extra hardware to get your lines talking. It's, since our phone lines come in over fiber, it's not a traditional copper line that you just plug in. And, SIP, basically, you get a network connection from Charter. You plug into your computer network. It talks to your phone system that way. So, we're removing some extra hardware that's not really needed, removing more points of failure. And, it allows for better pricing. So, I reached out to our Spectrum rep to learn more about this. And, in order to make this change, we'd have to sign a new three-year agreement with Spectrum to switch to SIP service. And, that would replace our current agreement for PRI service. We're paying about, varies a little bit, about $520 a month for the PRI service. And, the number he gave me, somewhere around $280 a month. And, it depends, you know, what fees and everything are added on. So, there's a cost savings with this. It removes a point of failure and it's a little more modern to work with. And, that ties in with getting a new phone system in place. And, not making this change, we'd have to buy some other hardware with the phone system. So, any questions?
I like that savings. Anybody have any questions? Motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson. And, second by Hagan that we approve entering into the new three-year agreement with Spectrum for SIP phone service. Any discussion?
Nice job.
Thanks.
Sandy will call the roll.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Scott Puchatsky.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
And Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thanks.
Josh, thank you. All right, Henry, this one's for you, a special use permit for ADI Development Company.
Well, actually, I think Andrew and I were going to tag-team it, so, did you wanna take it?
Uh, sure. I'll, I can start us off and.
Page, uh. Go down the wrong. Page 161.
So, in the packet, okay. Uh, mine doesn't have page numbers on it, but I guess it'll have the PDF. Did you say it was 161?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So this was brought, um, special use permit, um, application was brought forward by Tony Hose, who was the agent for ADI Development. They have the, um, they have the Domino's Pizza on Fulton Street, which is looking to relocate, um, into a little strip center, just to the west, east, is that east?
West.
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 I'm going west, I'm sticking with west. Of the current location. It's an old strip mall, and there used to be an Arby's in there, and so they are proposing to move over to the new location that's gonna provide some locational advantages for them. I think they're a little bit better interior and a good, um, drive-through, um, opportunity for them there. So the special use, um, restaurants being a special use here in the City of Wapaka, the, this, um, special use application was, um, brought forward to, to the department, and it was, um, reviewed, and we didn't have any major concerns with the, um, with the proposal that Tony brought forward. So we had, uh, put together staff report, brought that forward to Plan Commission, um, and Plan Commission recommended, um, approval to the, um, City Council. And, um, uh, and, um, I'm not sure what else, how in-depth we wanna get with these. Questions?
Questions?
Yeah.
It was a restaurant before. Why do you need a special use permit to put another restaurant in?
That's a good question.
Well, that's probably the vagaries of our current zoning code. I think, as I explained to Plan Commission, Paul, you were on council when we did the patch back in, I think, '08, maybe '09? And, um, what we did there, it was purposeful to allow the Plan Commission to see more projects. We put special uses on a lot of things. And it was meant to give Plan Commission ability to review projects as they come in and give them a little more oversight. And I think probably, in some cases, it's made it more onerous. Maybe this is one case. So, um, so that's, yeah.
Any other questions?
Make a motion we approve.
Second.
A motion by Hackett, second by Martin, that we approve of the special use permit for ADI Development Company, known as Domino's Pizza, for 1020 West Fulton Street. Any discussion? Uh, Sandy will call the roll.
Scott Puchatsky.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, and the next one, uh, I'll turn it over to you, Andrew, in just a second, but this, this one has to do with an ordinance change, so this is actually the first reading of that tonight, but Andrew, do you wanna just explain why they're doing the rezone?
Sure, I can go, give a quick overview. So this project applicant is the Church of Christ of Wapaka, excuse me, on 215 West Badger Street. Their existing church, I believe, holds roughly, has capacity for roughly 140 people. They're growing evidently and have a need for an expansion. They purchased a property, um, south, directly south, did I get that, uh, of their existing lot. That property was zoned, um, B2, which is the Central Business District designation, and RC Resource Conservation. It has a little wetland in the back of the lot, um, and so what they're doing here is essentially splitting that, um, off, um, and they're doing a rezone, um, to bring, uh, they're gonna leave the RC Conservation District designation in the back half of, of the lot, but they're gonna have, um, it'll be B2 Central Business District on the front side where they're doing their expansion. They're gonna be building additional auditorium, I believe, assembly that will allow them to increase their occupancy up by about another hundred, I believe.
Okay, any questions?
It might be relevant, maybe, I don't know if it's relevant, but the Plan Commission did look at the site plan for the project and, and had some nice discussion on it and made some, a few suggestions on it, and did approve it.
Okay, so again, we're talking about the rezone though, so this would be the other property there, of course, and this is just the first reading of that tonight. So we will take this up at our next meeting, which is on May 21st. Okay, and then still sticking with the Church of Christ, we have the, uh, special use permit, and, uh, asked the same question, it's already a church, why do we need to do a special use permit? But again, it's on a different parcel of property, and that's why we're talking about it tonight. Andrew?
Yeah, I believe that's the case. It's a special use within the B2 downtown district. So the special use permit process, a platte survey was put together, a site plan, um, showing the boundaries of the new lot. Site plan was put together, as, so Henry just mentioned. We brought that forward to Plan Commissioned and did have some good discussion, in particular regarding the layout of the, um, parking lot, which seemed to be kinda generating most of the discussion at that meeting. So, uh, there'll be an ingress and an egress, um, in, in that parking lot, there'll be capacity, um, ability for the churchgoers to have a drop-off, um, in the back door there. And, um, um, looking at the, um, layout of the lot and the proposed building, we went through kind of the site plan review process and didn't flag any major concerns. This, again, was brought forward to Plan Commission last week, and they had, um, made a motion to recommend, um, uh, approval to City Council. And I guess any other questions regarding that?
Okay, any questions? Anybody like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the special use permit submitted by Cox and Associates Architects and Planners for the property 215 West Badger Street, subject to the, to the conditions that were listed in the recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Hackett, I guess I don't need to repeat that. Any further discussion?
Just a question.
Yes, sir.
Does Resource Conservation District mean they can never do anything with that?
Andrew's the answer to that one there.
Um, I will, I don't know the code that well, so I could pull it up and take a peek right now.
Well, I can tell you, before he does that, but I can tell you that the area you're talking about, you couldn't build on anyways. It's a big dip down there, but.
I was just curious.
Yeah, okay. Is that good enough?
That's good enough.
All right, any other discussion? Uh, Sandy will call the roll.
Eric Olson.
Abstain.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Scott Puchatsky.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
And Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, and just a comment, uh, I said this at City Planning too, but Eric had asked me before the meeting, of the city planning meeting, uh, about his comfort level about voting on this. He is a member of the Church of Christ, so he chose to abstain from voting on this tonight. Okay, uh, let's go to license report 1447. What page is that on, somebody?
195.
Okay, thank you. We have one on there. We'd be looking for a motion to approve, uh, pending license, or background checks and if they owe any fines to the city. Motion?
I'll move.
Motion by Peterson, second by Hackett, that we approve of the license report number 1447. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right, Mr. Behrens, uh, County Highway Garage Facility Study, Justin.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Uh, my memo can be seen on page 196 of the packet, and following that is a proposal that I requested and received. Uh, so here we are again, um, we have a couple new older persons, so I'm gonna kinda go back in time a little bit. So the city has been looking into what to do with their public works facilities for a number of years, uh, prior to even my tenure here. Throughout that time, studies have been done and have identified that, yep, we need to consolidate, we need to, uh, get a bigger area, yeah, we need to house all of our equipment. So moving forward, uh, at one point several years ago, we were interested in the existing Wapaka County Highway Garage, as we thought it was the, uh, the best option that we had. Uh, the city worked with the county, we completed a memorandum of understanding where we would, uh, more or less have the right of first refusal, it's not the correct term, but basically we, we have the rights to negotiate with them before anyone else. But after that, they, they basically indicated that they wanted to keep their facility and utilize it for the Sheriff Department. A couple of years go by, and, uh, they approached us this last winter, uh, dead of January, and basically said, hey, are you guys still interested? Uh, so basically, we opened up the conversation again, 'cause we were unsure. As you know, we purchased, uh, vacant property, Haber Corn Field, for potential of a future, uh, facility. Uh, we had intent on, on installing a salt shed out there, uh, because when the County Highway Garage moves their new facility south of town, uh, basically, we receive all our salt from the existing facility right now, so, uh, we would be at a little bit of a disadvantage getting our salt way out there. So that was the plan. Uh, so we kinda had, uh, some, a lot of discussion on this, on what is the best route the city should go, uh, moving forward. Should we purchase an older property renovated and move in? It's certainly large enough for our operations to handle public works and park and rec. Converse is a brand-new building, uh, which, out on a, you know, spectacular piece of land. Uh, it, basically, in order to get that answer, uh, Henry and I found out, well, we can do a condition assessment, and basically what that is, is sending a group of architects and engineers through that existing facility, uh, and they would basically assess the condition of it, and then put a value to that condition, uh, and come up, they have a large, very large formula, and would basically guide us and recommend, here's the improvements you have to make, uh, here's to bring it up to code, and here's an idea of what it would cost. It is, uh, like, uh, like a formula to it, so there is some metrics that they will see that'll basically indicate whether this is a go or no-go situation. Uh, it's primarily hinging on the dollar amount of it. So basically, we thought this is probably the, uh, basically the most prudent tool to use to determine whether this is the site for us, or no, we were right in going with a brand-new, uh, building. I don't know what else to say. The quick five-minute rundown, so I'll just open it up to questions and discussion.
Go ahead. Has the county indicated what they are interested in giving this to us for?
Giving.
Giving, negotiating?
Yeah, uh, we've had a conversation, uh, we, no really dollars have been, dollar amounts have been thrown out there, uh, and we're not really sure on where to start, to be honest with you. And this is another reason why we're thinking we need to do this, because it'll tell us whether or not, and then where should we start with our negotiations.
Well, Justin, just to clarify it though, go back to the MOU and explain, because I think they're still under the, the county is under the theory that we, that they're going to follow what the MOU said and versus what our thoughts are on it.
The MOU outlines that, uh, the county will, uh, basically negotiate with the city only for the first six months that it is available, or basically until they move out. They haven't moved out yet. Uh, and that is, uh, and then also that it would be valued, or they'd be assessed value, and basically that would be the starting of the negotiations, minus, what was that number, 10%?
Yeah, 10 to 15%, which is our city portion of the county tax base, we shouldn't have to pay twice.
So basically, they'd have to, they have gotten an assessment done, it has a number assigned to it, uh, they have identified some other deficiencies that are there, uh, the fuel tanks have to be removed, we wouldn't want them, so that gets removed from the dollar amount. Did I cover that?
Yeah, I think, uh, when you talk about the memorandum of, of understanding, uh, there, uh, that's the number that they're working off of, and that's why I thought it was even more important, 'cause at first I said, holy cow, we gotta spend $12,000 to look at a building that's not even ours, but we need to know, uh, mechanically and, physically what the building, the problems that it has or not have, and, and if we could put a dollar figure on that, we'll have a better idea of what, what to offer them when it comes down to that. And that memorandum of understanding, uh, council did approve that memorandum of understanding a few years back, it's been quite a few years, so I'm sure it's hard to remember. But, uh, yeah, so there is a, there is a price that they're thinking of right now, but once we do this, I think we'll know better what that number should be.
Am I correct that this is almost a 100-year-old building?
Almost. The oldest section of it is 83, 86 years old. That's that, the brick part on the south side of East Fulton.
Parts of it, yeah.
Yeah, and that's been added on to several times throughout the years.
Plus, the, the building across the street is newer, I think that was built in the 60s, right? Yeah. Scott?
So am I correct in our understanding for doing this is, it's hopefully going to tell us, uh, whether we're better off if we buy this for our facility or build a new one? I mean, obviously, then, we're looking for cost savings, so is that what I'm getting at, we're trying to get to here?
This, uh, this study should indicate whether this is the best financial route for the city.
Yeah.
Yes.
Good idea.
So in this, when I wrote up the proposal request, I clearly stated in there a lot of this background, and had it, told them, here's a vacant site, we're expecting, we're budgeted, uh, six and a half million for a brand-new facility, we need to know which direction to go at this point. So they will help us to identify that.
Mayor, I'd move to, uh, approve the County Highway Garage Facility Study.
Second.
Motion by Mayo, second by Martin, that the council entered into a contract with Short Elliott Hendrickson Incorporated in an amount not to exceed 12,575, to conduct a condition assessment on the current Wapaka County Highway Department facilities, which are 515 East Fulton Street and 600 East Fulton Street. Any other discussion?
Mayor, may I add one more thing, please?
Yeah.
Uh, the money that we're getting for the, or using for this is coming from the Evan Street budget. We budgeted $680,000 to Evan Street, we only need 613. That's where this money's coming from. Just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. Any other? Sandy will call the roll.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Scott Puchatsky.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
And Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, you got another one here, Justin?
Yep, thank you. Uh, so following that, page 215 is my next memo regarding Main Street, uh, and I'm just gonna go through quickly what's behind my memo. 215 to 216 is the memo. Following that, 217 to 219 is an overview or a plan of Main Street, showing these areas that I'll be talking about here in just a minute. After that, page 220, 221 is a DOT flyer that outlines, uh, basically acquisition rights. 222 to 223 is a proposal from Right-Away Professionals, and then page 224 and 2, through 227 is an amendment agreement for SCH for Main Street Design. So, uh, Short, Short Elliott Hendrickson, uh, is the design consultants that we have onboard to, to design Main Street. Now, when we awarded that project, uh, we did not anticipate any issues as far as right away acquisitions. We assumed, uh, basically the property lines were at the building faces throughout the entire downtown, so we would just rebuild the road, we'd go right to the building faces. But lo and behold, we were wrong. Uh, as you can see, if you take a closer look at page 217, uh, you see the highlighted areas, basically that's showing you, uh, where the right-of-way stops and where the buildings begin, in about a one-to-two-foot strip where we're going to have to build sidewalk on private property. Since this is a DOT-funded project, they have a very strict procedure on how this happens, uh, and that is basically, um, triggering all of this additional, uh, work and additional, uh, contracts moving forward. Most of these acquisitions are temporary, meaning that we will only need it for the duration of the project, we will build the sidewalk, once it's over with, we don't retain any land, uh, it goes back to the property owners, and everything goes back to normal's life. There are three spots where we'll be looking to actually acquire land. Uh, one spot is down by the, um, Chamber of Commerce Building, uh, another spot is right in front of City Hall, and then the third spot is down at the Firehouse Apartments. We will need basically little triangular pieces on the very end corners, uh, just to make sure that we can build the sidewalk, build the road, uh, and we will need to pay for those. So a part of this is, uh, amending the contract with SCH, uh, so that they will, um, basically design the platte. Can you scroll up, please, Mike? Sorry about that. So SCH's amendments to the contract, they will create the platte surveys, or basically complete what a, uh, professional land surveyor would do, uh, start with the title work and provide the WIS dot relocation order. Again, that's, uh, WIS dot procedure. Uh, we have another contract on here, which is with Right-Away Professionals, they will finish up the title reports, they're gonna conduct a sales study, so basically determine how much we have to pay for this additional land, um, and complete appraisals, again, looking at the financials, the cost of it. Uh, and then we'll have land acquisitions, so we're assuming we're gonna be spending up to about $14,000 just to purchase these easements and new land, uh, and then just throwing a small contingency on this. So, uh, the DOT process requires that even with these temporary easements, even though we won't be purchasing new land, uh, we, there's still a minimal fee with that, and I believe that number is $250, that was recently changed. Uh, and the permanent ease, or the permanent acquisitions will be determined by the study done by Right-Away Professionals. Again, this is all triggered by DOT process. If this was a local project, we could probably, uh, settle this, you know, on our own without this big of a hit. The $70,000 that I'm looking for, uh, is not an increase to the Main Street budget, it's just gonna be absorbed into it, and we're just gonna have to make it work in the long run. So, again, the quick five-minute rundown, so I'll open it up to any questions or comments. or comments.
Okay. So, uh, Justin is asking for our approval and we would need that in the form of a motion. Anybody?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Puchatsky, that we, uh, enter in an agreement with SCH for the up to $70,000 to pay for easement and land actual, acquisition for Main Street construction project. Any discussion?
So are these landowners going to be getting checks for $250?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Uh, I should clarify, Mayor, uh, the $70,000 is not for SCH. It's, it's for project.
For the project.
Budget, yes. There's two separate contracts and then a third for land acquisition and then there's a contingency built in.
All right. So Alan and Scott, you guys are on that. Okay, awesome. Dave, did you have a question?
I was just going to say, he says it doesn't affect the total cost, but it's got to affect it somehow. You just can't add $70,000 and absorb it. But absorb it with what?
Kathy, go ahead.
We're going to have to cut about $70,000 out of the Main Street, depending on what our costs are. Um, there is always that, uh, unknown amount for the purchase of the right-of-way, the permanent right-of-way. Um, so, um, we would have to amend, um, the project scope. And SCH is very aware of that.
Yeah, I, probably the best way to answer that was is that we weren't going to borrow an additional $70,000 for that project. Okay. Well, we already realize that we're off, uh, potentially a half million dollars, right? Because we lost that CDBG grant opportunity. So we're trying to identify some other sources to try to add back some money. Um, but yeah. Okay. Uh, any other discussion?
Is the DOT, um, basically paying 80% of this anyway?
Justin.
Eighty percent of the construction cost of, um, participating items, which means they'll pay for concrete sidewalk, uh, roadway pavement, roadway gravel, storm sewer, that sort of thing.
That is, okay.
They won't pay for park benches, artwork. The design costs have been 100% on the city. That's part of our agreement with them. The design cost, 100% on us. Construction is 80% on the DOT.
Okay. Any other discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Puchatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Uh, under Communications of the Mayor, uh, Henry, you want to talk about, uh, the retreat and also whether they completed their survey or not?
Well, thank you very much. I, uh, you've been getting a couple emails from me the last week or so, kind of pestering you. Um, I believe the deadline is like 8:00 AM tomorrow. Uh, but I'm sure if you need another day or something, well, I could talk to.
I need another day.
Walter, okay.
Nine o'clock, I think.
Was it nine o'clock? So I'll, I'll, uh, well, he's our contractor, so we'll just tell him that he has to wait another day. Um, but we're going to be, uh, having the event. We'll start on, uh, Friday, May 17th at noon at the Danes, uh, Danes Hall. Uh, we're going to have some lunch brought in and then we're going to go, um, till about 4:30 and then there'll be a reception after. And then on Saturday, we're looking to start about 8:00, 8:30. And we want to get you out of there by noon. Um, so I still have a head when it's all over, because I know time is very, uh, very precious to folks. And Walter feels that he can get through what he needs to do in six to seven hours of planning time. And that's how much time we've built in. So, um, if you come, we're going to start, we're, the Secretary of the Department of Veterans Affairs is going to, uh, talk to us for a few minutes at about 1:00. So you don't have to be at the Danes Hall promptly at noon. If you show up at 12:30, you'll still have time to grab a bite and then, um, get settled in.
And there is going to be an agenda.
Oh, yes. I'm working on that. I've got, uh, some packets, uh, that I'll put together with some, some information in there for you.
Okay. Any questions on that? All right. Uh, we need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Keeland, that we adjourn. Any discussion? Or I'm sorry. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. We adjourned at 7:38 PM.